Commissioner Sorenson, can we please begin our workshop? We have a lot of ground to cover. I don't see Commissioner McKenzie here yet, but we'll just get started and hopefully he'll show up. So thank you all for being here this morning. My name is Dean Trantallas as mayor of our city and we have our attendance we have, we're not taking attendance, are we David? Just so we have Vice Mayor Commissioner Moritis and we have Commissioner Glassman and Commissioner Sorenson here in attendance. And I want to thank everybody who's participating here for coming this morning and being part of this discussion. So today we are having a workshop and this comes as a result of several members of the commission wanting additional information regarding the commuter rail service that is being proposed for South Florida. This commuter rail service is to go from Miami to West Palm Beach and will add additional train service on top of what already exists on the eastern tracks that we now have that run through our city. At the last commission meeting, a resolution was submitted to the commission to consider approving one of the approaches to crossing the New River. As many of you know, part of this new commuter rail service is going to require some way to try to cross the New River in order to try to limit the impact it would have on the marine industry upriver. That is a significant part of our economy here in Fort Lauderdale and South Florida in particular. So as a result of the resolution, the city commission was asked to support the tunnel as opposed to any bridge that would be that crossing. A number of thoughts were exchanged during that meeting, but in the end, members of this commission had asked that we receive additional information and so a workshop was proposed. And so today we are here at the workshop in order to hear the different points of view with regard to the bridge versus the tunnel approach. I want to thank everyone who's here today and I see that Secretary O'Reilly is here. Thank you so much for being here today. And for that reason, we would like to be able to give, oh hi Commissioner, we'd like to be able to give the secretary the opening opportunity to discuss what is that issue here? And what matters the FDOT has considered in making its recommendations? And we'd like to then also be able to make a presentation, I would like to make a presentation. And I think members of this commission would also like to opine on the matter. And then of course, if we do have time, I'd be happy to let any members of the public hear. So if I could begin, Commissioner, okay, Secretary O'Reilly, please come to the podium. Please make sure that the microphone is working there if we could.
Morning Mayor, Vice Mayor, County Commissioners, glad to be here. My name is Jerry O'Reilly. I'm the District Secretary for Florida Department of Transportation, District 4. So this is just by way of introduction. So the project team is here. Project team is made up of Department of Transportation people and a team from Broward County. So you're going to see a presentation on the technical side of the project, which DOT will give, and then the financial side, which Broward County will give. So glad to be able to be here, give our presentation, answer questions, have the discussion like the mayor said. It's an important project and an important issue for downtown Fort Lauderdale and for the region. I want to take a couple of minutes and give some of the history, make sure we're all on the same page. How did we get here? Many, many years ago, 10, 15 years ago. Many, many years ago, 10, 15 years ago, Miami Dade wanted to build a commuter rail from downtown Miami to Avensura. At around the same time, Palm Beach County wanted to extend Tri-Rail along the FEC corridor up to Jupiter. Both approached FEC or FEC Railroad and said, "We want to do this, we want to talk with you." FEC Railroad said, "Listen guys, I don't want to be talking to multiple people and piecemeal my corridor, I want to have an overall look." And that's how DOT got involved to do a planning level study of the tri-county area, which was the 85-mile stretch from downtown Miami up all the way through Palm Beach County up to Jupiter. That eventually became the Tri-Rail Coastal Link Study as you knew it several years ago. Originally, when that started, Brightline didn't exist. It was merely a twinkling in Hussein's head probably, but it didn't exist on paper. It wasn't a project at the time. With that in mind, then the New River was looked at, you have extra capacity on the bascule bridge, you don't need to build anything, right? Similar to what Brightline has done now with their, I don't know, 24, whatever number of trains it is, that capacity was there to run trains. But that quickly disappeared as Brightline came into existence. So, when Brightline came into existence and was being planned for, that capacity disappeared. So, you got to start looking and say, "How do I get those Brightline trains and commuter rail trains through that corridor?" So, FDOT led the study, like I said, through the planning phases. The study was broken up into a different part, kind of like it is today. The financial plan was being prepared and coordinated and led by SFOR TA. So, for Tri-Rail Coastal Link, they were the financial plan. Because DOT had always said and continues to say, "We're not going to pay any access fee to be in the corridor and we're not going to pay for operations and maintenance." So, we were just the overarching group that covered the tri-county area, that's why it made sense for us to do the study. So, we had a team, it was RTA with the financial and it was the planning councils and the MPO with the public outreach, building coalitions, deciding where stations are, that type of thing. So, we led it through the planning phase and that was funded with FDOT funds and some MPO monies from each county. Each MPO put in some money and were part of that. The project was identified in the long-range planning documents, but it was an unfunded need, so there was no money to build it or anything, it was just there and identified in the documents. That planning phase came to a conclusion and it had a long list of potential station locations, it had options for crossing the river. And then, the department funded the next phase, which is with the going to project development. But once you start project development, you have to have a plan to finish it. So, you need somebody who's going to say, "I'm going to pay the maintenance, I'm going to pay for the operating, I'm going to negotiate and pay for an access fee." That didn't exist at the time for the 85-mile corridor, so the study was just basically put on hold and it stopped, it wasn't progressing. That stayed on hold for quite a while and then Miami Dade County started developing their SMART plan. One of the components of their SMART plan was the northeast corridor, which was to bring commuter rail from downtown Miami right up to Avensura. And at this stage, Brightline's up and running and going and everything. So, Miami Dade aggressively working on that, they identified a source for maintenance and for operations, they identified sources of funds and are advancing negotiations with Brightline for the actual access. So, they're well on their way, they're actually working with FTA right now, they have a locally preferred alternative, they're well on their way. The next probably thing that happened was in 2019, the legislature directed the DOT to look at how would you cross the New River? There was a lot of people interested in the New River and on the rail bridge, if you remember, Brightline was operating at the time. So, legislator finished in July, we got direction, produce a study looking at the possibility of crossing the river and it has to be finished by the end of December. So, six months with whatever data we had to put together something, which is what we did. And that was delivered to the legislature the first of January, actually the second, I think. It was done, so it was clear at that point, there was people who wanted a new crossing of the New River. However, that study in itself didn't do anything, it was just a study. So, about that point, we had lots of people talking to us about it. DOT had reiterated to whoever wanted to hear it that we couldn't, we weren't going to do anything unless somebody was prepared to maintain and operate and somebody prepared to negotiate an access fee and work with the private sector. So, Broward County around then started talking to us about what would it take for us to be the lead on the project development study? So, Miami Dade took a different course, they're doing that themselves with Brightline. But Broward asked us, "What would it take for us to be the leader in the study?" We reiterated the points, which was the access fee and the access fee and the maintenance and operations. So, ultimately, we signed a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with the county that spelled out what roles each of us had. Ours was the technical role, like lead the project development study and bring it to the stage where there could be a locally preferred alternative and that gets selected by the Broward County Commission. Broward County have taken the lead in the financial planning and you'll get that presentation today. Broward County committed to funding the operating and maintenance costs of the commuter rail, at least they committed in the sense that they were willing to look at that, if they got an alternative they could work with, enough that we said, "Yeah, we'd start the study." And they also committed to the negotiations and working with Brightline and the commuter rail on the entry into that corridor via the passenger easement or Brightline or FEC, however that will ultimately be done. And Broward County was also going to be responsible for the consensus building around the stations and the issues on the project. So, we restarted the study and at that stage, our consultants got into it more in earnest, looking at the alternatives. And that's one of the main reasons, you know, last time we asked you to wait and get some input on making the decision, because we want to follow the process. If we don't follow the process, you could potentially negate any federal funds you're getting from anybody, the potential to get them. And the process is, you bring forward four alternatives, then ultimately, the locals pick a locally preferred alternative. Now, technically, that's not the DOT, that's going to be Broward County Commission. DOT is just performing the study. So, we don't have any money in our work program to build this project, except the money to do this study, which is underway. I'm sure Broward County will be coming to the state if the project moves forward and asking lots of people for money, because it's a big nut to crack. So, the study is at the stage now where it's coming close in the next month or so to looking at a locally preferred alternative. And that's why your discussions now are at the right time to give your input on what you believe should be, station location slash how the river is negotiated with a crossing, be it above or underneath. A couple of things to bear in mind, to attract federal funding and state funding, you have to have a financially viable project. It has to have a reasonable benefit cost ratio. The FTA have a well-established process how to do that. So, you can look at, "Here's my costs, here's how much, here's my costs, here's my ridership, does this meet the ratios that they set?" And the department, you know, will ask people for benefit cost ratios and analysis on it. It's a complex project, lot of decisions to be made, so thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to ask Phil from working for the DOT, he's managing the project, he has a presentation he'll go through quickly. And then Vince, it's going to be you, right, will go through the Broward County portion and then we can discuss or I guess hand it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, great, all right, thank you. Philly, you coming? So, just to clarify something, you're saying that the county would be the one responsible for the financing of the project? I assume when you say the county, that also includes the MPO? I mean, are they involved with partnering with the county government to secure financing? How is that, how are they involved with this?
So, when I say the county responsible, they're responsible for developing the financial plan. There could be sources of money from anybody, it could come from the state, it could come from each city, it could come from the MPO, it could come from the federal government, basically whoever they can build together.
Cobble together, cobble together various.
I expect every single person I mentioned will be part of that financial.
Okay, but FDOT is not involved with doing that process, they're just involved with design, okay. But in terms of making.
We're involved in the sense we're part of the project team, but they're the lead on that element.
Okay, but when it comes to making a decision, obviously, all of these entities are going to be looking to your department as your department defines the costs of each of these approaches. And that's what your role is, your role is to submit what evidence you have that underlies the cost estimates for each approach that you have identified in your study, is that correct?
That's correct. I wouldn't use the word evidence, but I'd use the word we've done an engineering study. And that's what Phil is here to present.
Okay, great.
Mayor, can I ask another question?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thanks, Jerry, appreciate it. You had mentioned that we as a commission, in terms of the timing for us as a commission to give our preference, we're kind of heading in the right direction around time. What's the right time in your view to give our preference? Is that now, is it soon? Do you have any feedback around that?
So, we've got a big meeting coming up, workshop, alternatives workshop.
Yeah, end of the month.
End of the month, where we get a lot of public input, we'll be presenting them all the information we're going to give here today, probably plus a little bit more as it develops. I think seeing the output of that, like what input we get from the public, what input we get from everybody, will be kind of a key time to hear that from my perspective. But cities can approach it any way that they feel like to, you know? There's been a lot of work done, so we won't complete a lot of information in the next month in reality, but you won't have heard that public input along the whole corridor. And the finance plan will be more developed at that stage.
At what stage?
In over the next three, four weeks, right? And they'll talk to that, but they've put together what they have right now.
Okay, we can loop back on that, okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Good morning. What will you be showing us this morning?
All right, good morning, thank you. We have a few slides that we're going to go through hopefully quickly and then the county's going to go over some of the financial outlook that they have and then we'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have. So, again, I'm Phil Schwab, I'm the lead for the DOT on the project. Vince Ruddy will be coming up in a short while to talk about the county's financial outlook. Just a little bit of overview, and as Jerry mentioned, the project's been around for a while, it's actually in the unfunded needs of the transportation plan. Miami Dade's already started their project as far as moving forward with the study, they're already in project development with FTA. Their project runs at the south end on the right there, you see going from Avensura down to downtown Miami. Our project is the limits of Broward County, plus we dip into Miami Dade in order to connect to the Avensura Station. And as Jerry mentioned, we have an MOU where we're leading the study, Broward County is responsible for the finance plan. We go about 27 miles within the corridor. We've made some technical recommendations for station locations, we've done a lot of coordination with several stakeholders and the New River crossing is a big deal, it's a big decision that'll have to be made and selected and so we've been having special workshops just for that and also meeting with stakeholders on that. And that drives us to an LPA and as Jerry mentioned, you need to get into project development with FTA to get into line to start competing for federal funds under that process. That LPA component will include a couple items that had already been decided through previous studies, like the mode, the commuter rail transit, push-pull locomotion with the technology, the alignment is the Florida East Coast Rail Corridor, we'll be utilizing some of the passenger rail easement that Brightline has. And then, these are the recommendations that we've made, which still need to be decided upon, but the technical team has made those recommendations. And of course, selecting an alternative to cross the New River, so we have the four alternatives, the low-level, mid-level, bascule bridges, the high-level fixed bridge and of course, the tunnel. We'll be making a recommendation after the public workshop that we're holding at the end of the month. We're anticipating county commission being able to select and approve an LPA later in the month of February and then the MPO will also have to endorse or approve that LPA. So, Jerry already mentioned the feasibility.
Phil, sorry, if you'd just go back to that, I just want to understand timeline again, if you don't mind. So, I can't see the bottom because of the close, MPO asked to do what, when?
We anticipate the MPO endorsing or approving the LPA in spring. This gets us in line so we can submit and get into project development with FTA this summer for their next cycle.
Okay, so, that's post Broward County Commission approving LPA.
Yeah, initially, the county commissioners, since they're the lead in the finance plan, will have to approve an LPA or endorse an LPA, the MPO will also have to as we move into FTA's project development.
And Commissioner.
Yeah.
The county commission would probably be looking to the cities to see what preferred alternative that they're interested in.
Right.
Before they make their decision. So, sometime between now and the 22nd.
And I feel like, Mayor, we would want to give our preference well in advance of the 27th, just so that we've got time, because we've got to reach out to the county commissioners and.
Well, I agree with you.
Public and everything, so, right, it's this kind of window.
Which I encourage you to do.
Right, yeah, absolutely. And from your understanding, Mayor, the county commission is good with that February 22nd, them making a decision, is that what you're hearing?
Well, that's the recommendation for FDOT. I don't know whether the county commission is going to accept that date or.
Yeah.
But that seems to be on their schedule right now.
Okay, great, okay, thanks, Phil.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so as far as the four alternatives, you see in the lower left, we have the base estimated construction costs, again, these are construction costs only. Of course, the low level is the least expensive with the mid and high level very close and I'll explain that on the next slide, how they've gotten so close together in the tunnel being a much larger number. But again, all these do not, also don't include right-of-way. So, the graphic here just shows profile, so the colored lines up at the top where you see one going above the other, in the middle here, and I don't know if you can see my cursor I put on, we have the New River, this represents the water of the New River, so it's just showing that clearance that we're having over the mean high water. And so, the low level we have at 25 feet, initially, we had 21 feet, we've extended that in order to keep some streets open, him or she in particularly compared to the feasibility study. Again, the mid-level and high-level bridges, one at 56 and a half, the other at 80, and then the tunnel. And one thing I want to point out is with the FEC rail line or with the rail line, the commuter rail, you can't work vertical geometry and horizontal at the same time, so sometimes the lengths of these get longer just to be able to work the geometry to get them back down and connect to the existing tracks. And we have approaches, which you see on the left and on the right. I've got two examples, just to give you an idea of what's happening on the approach, because this is where we have to touchdown, this is where you go from an open bridge to a wall in order to connect. And what we're trying to do is spot those where we, where we don't have streets, because when we, once we get to this shaded area that you see there, that has to be a retaining wall and that's where we're trying to avoid streets. So, we were able to modify the mid-level and high-level to avoid streets. We do have to have a slightly reduced vertical clearance, normally, we like 16 feet, this is 14 and a half feet. But we're able to touchdown and we touched down on both the mid-level and high-level prior to Davie Boulevard. So, we don't have any closures for those, but we do have a grade crossing at Davie. Whereas with the tunnel option, we have what's called portals. And the portals take a little bit longer to develop, because the tunnel has to be a certain depth below the New River, has to be a diameter depth below the New River, that's standard tunnel practice around the world. So, when we come up, once we get to a certain point, we have to expose the tunnel and so we're a little deeper than if you were a bridge going over a road. Plus, the train tracks need 23 and a half foot vertical clearance, so that takes a little bit more space. So, we couldn't get to grade before Davie Boulevard, so a benefit is that we're bypassing Davie Boulevard, you don't have an extra, you don't have the more trains going through Davie Boulevard, but we do have to close 15th Street on the end. So, that's just an illustrative example that we have.
Would that same situation also exist for Sunrise Boulevard? Would that same situation also exist for Sunrise Boulevard?
No, we're able to connect the tunnel before Sunrise Boulevard.
But if we wanted to go north of Sunrise, we could still do that, correct?
That would have to be looked at and evaluated. And again, the touchdown point with the geometry, what happens, a lot of the streets become closer together. Luckily, south of Davie, there's a series of streets, like 12th, I think it's 13th and 14th, that don't go through the tracks. So we have more space to connect there. So you'd look for places like that to be able to connect to avoid cutting off the streets.
And, sorry, Phil, just go back there. So south tunnel portal, that would, so the tunnel would come out, is it south of Southwest 15th or north, or to be determined?
Well, it's right on Southwest 15th.
Right, it'd come out right there.
So I'll have a graphic later that shows the portal. Because that's an open-air type of portal. The will-be walls needed, you know, that surround it. But it's a little bit longer. You know, a portal is about 1,500 feet in length. Whereas if we had an approach for a bridge, because the bridge doesn't have to clear as much over a road, we're able to do that in 600 to 750 feet where a tunnel is more like 1,500. It's like double.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so the low-level bridge, of course, doesn't address all the boats, particularly the marina boats. The marina industry has been very vocal that the low-level doesn't, they're not interested in the low-level. They seem supportive of mid-level, high-level, and tunnel options because that gives them the best benefits from a boating perspective, particularly the larger boats that the marinas cater to. The challenges with this is that we do have, you know, a large pier that would have to go next to the river. The pier itself, the span itself is approximately 80 feet. So it'll be 80 feet above the tracks, and that'll be maintained in the open position until a train comes. So just similar to the existing FEC line. Now, the FEC line and all these alternatives remains at grade. It remains at grade and stays in there. This also has the least amount of right-of-way impacts. It does need to require the closure of Southwest 5th Street. This is just some examples of how you could treat the walls coming down. This is an example just to the south of Hemershy, where you can see they put some murals on the wall and tie it into the local community. So from a mid-level alternative, this addresses most all the boats. You can see from the rendering, the span in the open position goes about 80 feet above the tracks. We are able to avoid a lot of the cross-streets because of the length, and you saw that from the profile sheet. We're able to avoid a lot of the streets in the area, including Broward Boulevard. This will require some of the low-level operations of maintenance where we have the bascule bridge. We'll have to have a full-time bridge tender. The station where the existing Brightline is will have to be elevated to about 50 feet above the ground. And we'll share a platform, we'll extend the platform, but share that area with Brightline.
Phil, if you could go back there, not the height, but the width of the New River Crossing there, is that basically the same navigable width as exists now with the existing bridge?
Yeah, we would most likely have to maintain the width of the existing channel.
The current width, okay.
And we've had some coordination with the coast guard, and that will continue regardless of any option that we pick. We'll continue that coordination and get approvals through that.
Okay, thanks.
So here are just some renderings. Again, this is also around Hemershy. So it just shows the openness that we can have with the structure and different treatments that can be done around the area. This is by 9th Street. This just shows a different type of structure type that could be done and tied into the area. And whatever landscaping to help soften everything and work with the communities and the cities to develop any type of aesthetic treatments. From a high-level perspective, this is very similar to the mid from a cost standpoint. But we have, we can get 100% of the vessels through. We don't have the O and M of the bridge tender or the bascule bridge that we'd have to account for. Again, this requires an elevated station. This goes to about 80 feet. There's not enough space from the river to the station in order to get it down much because we can't do that horizontal geometry that's needed to span out for the station as well as the vertical. So that station would be around 80 foot above the ground. And again, we avoid a lot of the cross-streets. And this is the same rendering, but just with a higher bridge that I showed you earlier. So we have the openness in these areas that we can create and work with everybody on any type of aesthetic columns or treatments that are needed. Here's just another example. And at Sistrunk, really, the mid and high-level are at the same elevation. So this would be the same graphic for either, and this is in the Flagler Arts and Technology District. Just some examples of what could be done with the structure types.
Phil, construction impact on vehicular traffic, mid, high, tunnel. Completely different between tunnel and mid and high? Similar?
It's difficult to tell at this point. I think they're going to be similar. You have to think from a tunnel standpoint, now you're digging out all this dirt. You're not sure how you're going to have to treat this dirt and whether there's any type of contamination, how you do the de-watering. So that's a very extensive process, particularly in an urban area. You know, as far as the volumes and the number of trucks that require to remove all that dirt. With a structure, you have to bring in the piers, you have to bring in those different elements. Luckily, you're along a railroad, so you can kind of have some placement areas and so forth and see what you can work from the rail side of things as you move forward. But there's a lot of pile driving that has to take place and so forth. So most likely, there'll be drill shafts to try and minimize some of that. But then you'll have to get concrete poured in and so forth, similar to tunnel. You've got to get the concrete plant going and everything. And I know a lot of the tunnel experts, they like to have all that on-site. So they're going to have to find an area to do that. So I think all these options are going to be very disruptive when it's construction time, for sure.
Thanks.
So these are just some examples, whether it's mid or high-level, just of bridges in urban areas. So I just want to provide some of this for context. And here are some where they've kind of blended into the area and used some of the local area to develop whatever aesthetic treatments that they're putting on bridges and so forth. This is grabbed from the, I think it was the county's presentation done by the county just with the governmental center by Zakovich. So we just want to put this in there. I know we've heard different things on the governmental center. So this was an example that was in one of the brochures or one of the PowerPoints that was done regarding the governmental center. And we've got different examples down in Miami of trains near or bridges near the governmental centers. So the tunnel alternative. Now, the tunnel actually bypasses more roads, basically Davie Boulevard than the others. And again, from the navigation community, 100% vessels, there's no restriction there. It does need to go fairly deep under the water, and that creates the need to have a below-ground station. The below-ground station will be very challenging. I know we've met with some of the tunnel experts to kind of go through methodologies and so forth on what could be done. We still need a lot of geotech information to delve into that in more detail. But it can be very disruptive, as you had mentioned earlier. We do need a little bit more right-of-way when it comes to the tunnel at those portals because they are very extensive, and we need to come up outside of the existing tracks. And this, again, there's a closure at Southwest 15th Street, just south of Davie Boulevard with this. And there's also a closure of 15th Terrace or 5th Terrace at the Sunrise Boulevard intersection that would have to be closed.
And what's, sorry, Phil, the kind of property impact, the joining property or budding property impact there is what, or who owns that?
Well, there's several properties. So we'll have all that on display at the public workshop and have that in a little bit more detail. So the primary fee takings, I mean, there would have to be underground easements throughout this whole alignment.
Okay.
It's going onto private property for the most part. So that would have to be done as well. Everybody could have different views on what that underground easement means and so forth. But I would like to focus on the fee takings because we know people can't do much with- Fee taking, you're just taking the entire property, where underground easement, they can still operate above.
What is, I'm not familiar with that. Is fee-taking like eminent domain, or what does that mean?
Yeah, well, you would do eminent domain for an underground easement or an aerial easement. In some areas, we have the bridge that goes over, I think, three properties. We would be looking for an aerial easement for portions of that. Goes over a lot of the city streets, so we'll have to work out something to shift the streets over and so forth. The fee takings is when you're taking the entire, not the entire property, just what you need. So a lot of times, we have slivers that are five feet, 10 feet in order to accomplish what we need, whether it's relocating Second Avenue or something else. At the portals, you know, it's a little bit more.
Yep.
Because it's a little larger footprint that we're trying to accommodate at that point.
Does, are there more in terms of, again, just generally, are there, is it generally more square footage of fee takings that would be taken with a bridge or with a tunnel?
There's more with the tunnel.
Well, can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
So we've been given some of your analyses with regard to the mid-level bascule bridge. And an example of what the commissioner has been asking, the area on Sistrunk Boulevard, you show that you want to take a sliver of land, which in this particular case, happens to cut right through the building of the Sistrunk Marketplace. And correct me if I'm wrong, but your analysis says that your total impact areas would be 6.8 acres. But the reality is, you can't take a sliver of a building. You'd have to take the whole parcel, just like you have yourself cutting through Regal Trace where you take away their pool and all their amenities area. I mean, do you think that that's possible, that you're going to only have to take a sliver, as you say, and not impact the entire parcel and not be responsible for more than just the sliver that you speak of?
No, in some cases, when you have a sliver impacting a property to the extent that it damages a building, we've had some cases where they've cut and re-faced buildings. We have some places where-
Well, you can't just, this, you would, Sistrunk Marketplace, you would put out a business because you want the bridge to be right on top of the building. And you only think that a trestle is necessary for the sliver part. But the reality is, that business is gone. And Regal Trace, where are they going to relocate their amenities? So-
Hold on a second.
So I'm trying to understand-
Hold on a second.
Yeah.
If they are going to disrupt the pool at Regal Trace, it means the whole property's gone.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, but, so, that can't be a, you know, I'm not taking away from what you're saying. The pool's on the western end of the property, which is over probably like, what, 5th Avenue? So it's got to be the maintenance, the stuff near that wall, just so that people don't hear that their pool's going to be taken away. That's on the western end of the property, right by the post office.
Well, that's not what this map shows.
So it must be backwards or something, because their pool is over by the post office.
Okay, well, I'm just showing-
That'd be drastic. If it is, that's huge. But they can't do that and come back over to the eastern end of the Sistrunk Marketplace.
Well, I'm just showing, I'm just showing the map as they've, as we've been provided the map.
It can't be the pool.
I'm just using it as an example.
Yeah, but I'm afraid-
What's that?
I got folks out there listening and watching. If they think their pool's going to go away, that creates a whole other perspective of this.
Well, there's an amenities area that's on the eastern side of their property, which should be eliminated as a result of this taking. And I'm just wondering how the department intends to compensate, you know, that community for the taking of their amenities area. So this is just, again, we can't go parcel by parcel. But I'm just using that as an example of your minimizing the impact when in fact, the reality is, you know, a tunnel is not going to impact anything. We're not taking Sistrunk Marketplace. We're not taking the amenities area. We're not, you know, there's no taking here.
All right, there's, there's-
As far as, you know, interrupting, as far as interrupting the infrastructure and the livelihoods of businesses along this system. And so I just wanted to just give an example. Here, Commissioner, here's the pool. It's right along the tracks.
There must be another pool there.
Let's have another pool.
The pool's on the western end of the-
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is what I was just showing. So, and there's tennis, there's a basketball court there. All that would be gone.
Yeah, but that's on the western end. Something's wrong with that picture.
No, this is the tracks right here. These are the tracks.
It may not be captured, their basketball courts and their pool is right by the post office.
Okay.
I walk there every morning.
Okay.
That could be just like any other of the things that we have here that may not be reflective of what's there. And I appreciate Scott, you know, doing the extra work, but that's not my point.
Well, it's really not my point either. The point is that there would be significant interruption of existing investment in infrastructure that we need to contemplate as we're looking at these takings. Should the bascule bridge or any of the bridges be identified as the preferred alternative? And I'm trying, and I think it begs the question, well, how much interruption of existing investment in infrastructure would a tunnel have? I think that's what the commissioner was kind of asking. So, and I just wanted to point out, an example, using your map and using your analyses, how that would, we cannot minimize the impact that a bridge approach would take simply because you can't just take a sliver of a building and expect that business to still remain in business. Or you can't take a sliver of a housing community, which is, and impact, you know, an amenities area and not think that that's going to impact, you know, their community. It's just, it's just something is far more complex than just, you know, the response that I think you gave the commissioner. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Sure, absolutely. I don't want to diminish slivers of right-of-way. And I think in that area, it's aerial easement only. But the slivers, when we have to take right-of-way, typically at this level of study, we define what we need. We need to be able to explain what those impacts are. And as the project moves forward, we try and reduce those impacts even greater. If we do have to go through eminent domain to condemn that property, property owners are given, you know, full rights, you know, as far as what they get paid for the properties. And if they have to relocate amenities, they're able to do that as far as the compensation that they receive. This happens all the time on the road projects where we do that. A lot of times, they can do that in advance and so forth. So we work pretty closely with everybody when it does come to that point where we need right-of-way and hopefully can work with any property owners affected. And they have full rights with their own engineer gets paid for through this process. Attorney gets paid through that process. And again, our goal is to minimize right-of-way on all alternatives. At this level of study, we need to define it. And as the project moves forward, regardless of what LPA, because the tunnel has significant right-of-way impacts as well, we will work with those property owners to try and minimize what that impact is to everybody.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah.
This is the tunnel illustration. Am I correct?
Yeah, this is the portal on the north side. So as you can see, we're putting Andrews Avenue over the tunnel portal. This is similar to what I had mentioned. We have this graphic here. This helps represent what the portal may look like. The walls would be, have to go up above the ground, a certain elevation, depending on what the sea level rise would be and so forth, and just the overall protection of the tunnel port holes.
And how high is that wall?
Well, in this area, we need, it would start out at probably a 50-foot depth, so to speak. Mike, I don't know if you have more details on the profile.
Well, how far above grade, I think, is being asked?
Which wall are you-
I'm asking, yeah, that's true, but how tall is it? Because to me, it looks like it's touching the bottom of the bridge. If we're talking about the-
Yeah, Andrew, well, it would be connected, you know? The wall of the portal will come up, not necessarily sit on it, but it'd be very close.
50 feet from elevation?
Well, and that area is going to be a little bit less. I don't know the exact number. It could be 40 feet depth at that point to the rail.
Forty feet at the portal, right?
No.
At where Andrews Avenue, Andrews Avenue is very close to-
So you're going to elevate Andrews Avenue 40 feet?
No, no, no.
Okay.
The tunnel goes under.
Right, that's what I thought. It's just going to be, it's just going to be at grade.
So how-
Yeah, we may have to pick up Andrews a little to manage, you know?
Let me ask my question so I can understand this illustration. Okay, let, let me ask my question, so I can understand this illustration. Nothing to do with anything. This picture, I'm not even going to say portal, how tall are those walls from someone's grass, the top of the grass or top of the street, which is elevation, like the mayor said?
At, at grade.
At grade.
The, the portal walls, we haven't defined exactly where they're at, it could just be a, a few feet.
Because to me, how tall is the bridge? That point of the bridge, how tall is that?
How tall is the bridge? How deep is the bridge?
How deep, tall? How, how high? Because that wall is touching the bottom of the bridge, based on its illustration.
Right. Andrews Avenue will remain similar elevation that it is today, all the way across...
Oh, that's different, okay.
Yeah.
So, that's about 10 feet.
Yes.
This bridge is like it's going over these things, tracks.
Yeah, the tracks are coming out of an underground portal, so the tracks are buried, they're 40 feet below ground, maybe, at that point.
Okay, so, it's going to be a 10-foot above-grade wall, basically. Get your statements correct. Pretty much. This is not a trick question.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure...
He's trying to understand this photo.
I say yes.
Okay, proceed, proceed.
All right, all right.
Good question, though.
So, this is just a cross-section of the station, a portion of the station, to give you an idea of the depth of the station. We will have vertical circulation. You can see the 25-foot tunnels will feed into it, and then the, the, the station has to open up, and there'll be a platform in the center, and people can go up and down from the, the, the middle. This is just a similar, this is a section view of that area with the platform and the vertical circulation that you can see. So, we'll have to remove, and, and some of the challenges in all these alternatives is maintaining the train traffic as we build, whether it's a bridge or a tunnel. These are just some illustrations of Port of Miami Tunnel. Port of Miami Tunnel, on the left, you can see, they, they had, they were required to have some doors, and they had to put up these large structures to support the doors for resiliency and to close off the tunnel if they need be. We haven't gotten to that point yet, we, we're hopeful that we won't have to do that. That would add, you know, not only cost, but also be something that we'd have to deal with from an aesthetic standpoint. So, moving forward with an LPA, we have to get to a point where the, the Commission, through, through all the feedback that they get, are able to select six station locations, they're able to select the alternative to cross the new river, and then they'll also have to decide whether the region can really afford or move forward with an LPA, given, given the estimated costs, whether it's tunnel or bridge, whether they can move forward with it, with what they're getting from it. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Vince.
Well, that's a very powerful statement, though. Are you, are your ridership estimates so low that we find ourselves having to cut corners all the way up and down this, this, this system? That, are you saying that it can't necessarily accommodate the cost of a tunnel? I mean, I think ridership is what is going to, is what's going to push this, right? I mean, we, your department has made some estimates, and I guess what you're saying is that you have a certain budget to work with, based on those ridership estimates. Have those been, has, has that analysis been part of our, our presentations yet, so that we know, you know, is this what's pushing the bridge from your perspective, because you don't think you can afford the tunnel? Is this whole system maybe just, you know, illusory, and that we really can't afford to do this, no matter what, because we don't expect ridership to be that great? I personally, just so we all understand, I think that the whole concept of, of a local train from Miami to West Palm is probably, is a great idea, okay? And I, and I've advocated it 20 years ago, 30 years ago, okay? And I, I've seen the success of how it has worked in other communities. I come from New England, and we took trains all the time to get from point A to point B, so the, so the viability and sustainability is there. The question, now, we're just, now, we're a growing state, we're new, you know, we haven't built a lot of our infrastructure, so, you know, these are legacy projects that are going to impact us for generations to come. And so, that's why this Commission needs to make the right decision going forward, in, in partnership with the county, in partnership with the MPO, and in partnership with FDOT. So, you can understand how important it is for Fort Lauderdale to make that right decision. But I just want to make sure that some of the conversation is not being skewed by criteria that have not yet been made part of the conversation, and that's ridership. And, and if you're saying that the ridership is going to be minimal, insufficient to cover the costs of some of these recommendations, then we need to know that, and that needs to be part of the discussion. Doesn't have to be answered right now, but it needs to be part of the discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying that regardless of what's chosen, somebody will need to pay the portion of it. And so, from a funding standpoint, like Jerry mentioned, it's not a DOT project, it's a county, it's a municipal, it's a regional project, and we're here to support, but when we go to an LPA, that needs to be in place. So, the county Commission's going to have to evaluate what kind of impact it has on the county and make that type of decision. That's, that's what I was...
Will we, wait a minute. Will we know what funding opportunities there are before the LPA is decided? I mean, there's a new infrastructure bill that has, regulations haven't even been written yet at the federal level. So, shouldn't we choose that what's best for this community and then go out and seek funding?
So, Mayor, the next part of the presentation gets into the analysis, where the money will come from, how it'll come.
He's the county guy.
He'll talk about benefit-cost ratio a little bit, and I can share some ridership numbers. So, I think a lot of your questions will get answered by me.
Okay, great, okay.
He's the county guy.
Thanks, Phil. Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you all, thank you for the opportunity. As Jerry said at the beginning, county is a partner with FDOT in this project, and we are taking the lead on the financial planning aspects of it, although working very closely hand-in-hand with our FDOT colleagues and other key stakeholders, especially when it comes to the cost estimates. I'm going to go through a few slides here that are not only going to focus on financial, there's a few other kind of big pictures, so stepping back a little bit from the technical considerations, I think that Jerry and Phil did a good job of, of covering, we're going to talk about a few other key, key aspects from the county perspective, and I'm going to start off with a little bit of background.
Sorry, can you just give us your name and role, just for the public?
Absolutely. My name is Vince Ruddy. My title is Chief Negotiator with Broward County, and I've been assigned by the county administration to lead and coordinate on the county's behalf on the commuter rail project.
Great, thanks.
And it's a great pleasure to be with you all today. So, a little bit of background here, we are, obviously, the county is doing a lot of things on transportation and mobility, especially now with our surtax funding source. So, this project really is going to be one of many different transportation infrastructure projects, so it's important to see this in the, the context overall. I'm going to cover a few of the positives here, you can see on this slide, we did sign the MOU with FDOT in January of last year, basically a year ago. This corridor, the FEC corridor, compared to others such as the CSX tracks further out west, has the advantage of being closer to the urban cores. We do expect the ridership to be greater than what we currently see on trail, tri-rail, which is good news. Another positive is that in the context of the various workshops and work to date, we have confirmed that most of the municipalities are on board to share costs for station development, and we're also seeing high degrees of support by the business community. Another favorable development, it was mentioned earlier, Dade County is moving ahead, they've officially entered what the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, refers to as the project development phase, so they are moving forward with their portion of the project, the southern portion that goes from Aventura Mall all the way down to downtown Miami. I think it's sort of obvious to most people that if the SFRTA and tri-rail do absorb this project or include it, add it into their existing operations, there would be opportunities for synergies and economies of scale. So, when you add more systems and more lines, you're able to use your current overhead, your current staff and other costs, to cover more moving trains and lines, so you would expect there to be certain benefits in that respect, in terms of operating efficiencies. And then finally, as mentioned, federal funding for this project is possible if the project compares favorably with competing grant proposals at the national level. We expect, we're planning to go through the FTA New Start Grant Funding Project, Process, which is a competitive process with certain parameters that have been mentioned previously. Some of the negatives, this is not all good news, right? This project, commuter rail, was not included in the original Broward surtax budget. There is a dedicated funding source, we have the surtax, there could be enough money to cover this project, but it is limited, so we need to be careful, very cautious in terms of how much money is committed to this project.
So, on that, on that score, when this surtax was originally passed, I think there was an estimate as to how much money would be derived from the one-cent sales tax over the 30-year period. I'm now here getting information that that estimate is actually low, and there may be additional funds available. Is, can, can cities expect to tap into that differential, since it, it would not take away from the original projects that were earmarked? Is that something that cities could, could rely upon?
I don't know how to answer that question, I mean, there will be fluctuations up and down, there'll be good years and bad years when it comes to sales tax revenue. I am personally not privy to the latest projections. I have heard the types of things you're saying, but I can't, I can't say, I can't speak behalf, on behalf of the county commissioners, as to whether that would lead to increases in either local government allocations or otherwise.
Okay, thank you.
There are presently underway, there's a study right now being done by the county on, it's called the County Systemwide Transit Study Planning and Preliminary Design. This is looking at 26 miles of light rail transit, it's looking at, I believe, seven bus rapid transit corridors, a number of other things. This commuter rail project was not included in that study, so we're kind of doing these two planning initiatives in parallel. Another negative is there's still some debate or a lack of clarity in terms of the governance structure. Who is going to run and control this new commuter rail, coastal link, whatever you want to call it? As I said earlier, there is many that believe SFRTA and tri-rail would be a logical choice, but when the process started, I believe there was talk, at, at one point at least, about Brightline possibly being the operator for this. Miami-Dade County itself runs, they have their own rail operations, and they may decide to run at least the southern portion of this, and if whoever's running the southern portion, it doesn't make sense to divide it up. So, there's a number of different options in terms of who would operate it and how it would be governed. The tri-rail SFRTA institutional structure is an established regional entity with representation from all three counties. It would seem to make sense, even though at the moment, Palm Beach is not being talked about as a, I would say, committed, active participant. They're, they're participating in meetings and planning, but there's no funding source yet identified in Palm Beach. So, there are some outstanding questions. It's undefined, not to say that it can't be sorted out and, and will be, I'm sure, but it's, as of now, still a little bit up in the air. The other, I would say, negative on this, in other commuter rail projects like Sunrail, like tri-rail, the state entities have intervened and have purchased the existing rail tracks and right-of-way outright upfront, so that the cost of using those tracks is not borne by the operator. In this case, we've received no news or confirmation to date that FECR or Grupo Mexico, who owns the current freight operation, would be willing and interested to, to sell off the rights. So, as a result of that, the current owners of the passenger easement of any passenger service over those tracks is Brightline, and Brightline expects to receive a track access fee for that. That additional fee to be charged will be borne by the system and adds to the, the operating cost. It's just another, at, at the moment, it's a fact that reduces the cost effectiveness of the project. And then finally, the point as being discussed is, whether you're going under or over the new river crossing adds a significant amount of capital expenditure to the project that needs to be considered. We've talked about the federal funding and the FTA New Start Grant as the most likely source. State of Florida typically with these projects will share half of the remaining portion, so if the federal government takes 50%, FDOT could take 25%, and then the local, the other local governments would take the other remaining 25% balance. In this case, we, as I said earlier, the municipal governments are expected to chip in, especially for the, the cost of the actual stations in their jurisdiction, there's a number of options that the local cities or municipalities can use to, to raise those funds. And as mentioned here at the bottom, private sector, in many of these transit projects, private developers come in and help to cover the costs, and, and in many cases, co-develop or do what's called joint development projects in conjunction with the station, so that they could leverage the, the higher value, the, the value capture that's associated with these new types of commuter transit systems. So, there is interest, there's appetite, there's already, some of the cities have launched competitive tenders to invite bids from private developers, they did the same thing in Miami-Dade for some of the stations being contemplated for the southern portion of this. So, it's very important to leverage as much of these funds as possible, again, since the project was not included in the surtax budget, the county is seeking to leverage as many complementary sources of funding as possible to reduce the burden on our budget. This slide here provides an example of the types of property development opportunities. I mentioned the joint development in regard to the stations. This picture shows the downtown Miami station, and last year in September, the news came out that the FECI, the parent company of Brightline, actually listed its Parkline Miami property at a price of $500 million. This was, at the time, I think, one of the highest, highest price, highest value deals in the real estate market last year, and I, I'm pretty sure finishing up the year, nothing, nothing surpassed it. It was a record transaction for two properties that are actually right above the downtown Miami train station, which happened to be designed and built around elevated tracks. So, what's interesting about this, and by the way, just right next door to this, adjacent to this property, is the joint government, or I should say, the government center for, for Miami-Dade County. Blackstone paid $230 million for a couple of office complexes adjacent to the station. The bottom line here is that we've seen, not just in Miami, but in many other cities, when these new public transit projects get developed, if they're done the right way, it is possible, whether it's underground, above-ground, in the case of downtown Miami, it was above-ground tracks and elevated tracks, it is possible to not only maintain property values, but to actually increase them substantially. And I, I do believe that this specific example, highly relevant to downtown Fort Lauderdale and the joint government center that's under discussion between our two, our two governments. Project funding and financing. These are possible approaches, and as I was, I'm going to say earlier, these still have yet to be confirmed or decided upon, definitely not by the Broward County Commissioners, we're still in early stages of briefing them on this and discussing the options, but one of the possible approaches is that the new river crossing, whether it's a tunnel or a bridge, would most likely need to be separated outside of the FTA New Starts Grant application. And the reason for that is when it's included, when you present the project as a whole, the cost for that one asset, that one specific component is so high, that the cost effectiveness ratio that was being referred to by Jerry earlier, the cost per trip, gets to a level of range that the FTA would give it a low score on the cost effectiveness rating. The argument being made is that it might be possible to present this project as a separate project outside the FTA New Starts Grant, consider it an enrichment that has benefits, you know, beyond the immediate transportation needs, including benefits to the maritime industries, preserving historic things or whatever. There could be a logic for presenting this outside as a separate project, and we actually anticipate this as a likely scenario, but if we do it that way, if we separate it out, we obviously would need to find some other source of grant funding to cover the cost of the, the new river crossing or under or over crossing. We also believe, and we've actually had discussions already with Miami-Dade County, that... that there could and probably should be cost sharing. This is an asset that if the county by itself pays for it, but the other counties, including Miami-Dade and then future Palm Beach are benefiting because passengers are crossing this bridge and going north and south, it might make sense to develop some type of cost sharing. It might be a small portion, but every little bit counts. And then finally, I mentioned the joint development opportunity. We do believe and we're going to continue to promote the idea that leveraging private development, getting as many private developers to participate, this is not just a cost to them, it's an opportunity to make profit. They can invest a little bit in a station development and associated surrounding real estate development opportunities and stand to make quite a bit of money. The final approach is, is clear. We've mentioned it. We need to confirm that after all these things are factored in and we make certain assumptions about grant funding, that there will be enough county funding sources available to cover any gaps in both the capital and the operating budgets. I'm now going to talk about some of the cost estimates and projections from our financial model, but before I do, just a few notes on the model and the, and the estimates included therein. Capital cost estimates are all really preliminary, right? They can be used for initial financial planning purposes, but they really can't be used for detailed programming of, of, you know, design build activities as they're preliminary. Until the concept design implementation plan progresses further, we're really at a, at an early stage. These costs do not include, as Jerry said, note, any compensation for any of the required right-of-way, whether that's ground or aerial rights. Does not include costs of any public art or cultural enhancements. We've been in discussions with the Broward County Department of Culture and Arts and there's a lot of interest and we believe potential to take advantage of some of the areas above the tunnel or below the bridge to, as they have in Miami and other big cities, develop linear parks, art galleries, other types of enhancements that could actually compensate or mitigate some of the negative impacts that people normally associate with this type of infrastructure. But we just have not included any of the money. A lot of times the county will set aside 1% or 2% of the capital costs to contribute to various types of art exhibits, art galleries, cultural and recreation opportunities to help sort of offset and compensate. A lot of these projects down in Miami, they've created nonprofit organizations and websites and sort of programs to help, you know, really integrate the community and allow them to be an active participant, not just in building this, but subsequent to the construction to take advantage of the assets and use them in ways that some people might not imagine are possible, but are increasingly being used by creative jurisdictions. In San Diego, underneath one of their bridges, they built a sculpture garden. Again, with the proximity to Riverwalk, I think there's a lot of potential. Right now, the county is actually working, I believe are pretty advanced on a proposal to do a artistic and architectural lighting project under the Andrews Avenue Bridge, which our Culture and Arts Division is very excited about. And that's one of the things they talked about when we talked about the possible of a bridge or a tunnel, how we could do similar things to enhance any additional or new infrastructure added on this crossing. A final note, oh, I, I mentioned the operating cost estimates. There's certain assumptions built into this that will need to be revisited and revised. One of them is the agreed cost sharing formula between Miami-Dade and Broward. There's a lot of different ways to define how we share costs. You could do it on the basis of track miles. You could do it on the basis of boardings. And depending on which basis you use or whether it's a hybrid, that will define in a different way what the relative percentage of sharing on operated costs would be shared between Miami-Dade and Broward County. So these are all things that are under consideration. And finally, as I said earlier, none of this, the model or the estimates have not been reviewed or approved by the Broward County Board of Commissioners. And we will be having meetings and, and briefings with them shortly to discuss this in conjunction with some of the public workshops. But they are, you're really getting a preview of this, I would say in parallel with what a lot of our commissioners have seen. So this is not yet official, subject to change and revision, but please, please bear with us. These are what, this is what we're seeing from our model in terms of preliminary projections just for the operating costs. At the top portion, we're talking about the operating costs. We have projections of total annual revenue, which includes Fairbox revenue and other revenue. And then you have an operating cost balance, which is shown in the middle. We're showing three different scenarios here. A base case, which is kind of the mid-level, mid-range estimate based on what we expect. But we're also showing a worst case and a best case to kind of set some parameters and set a range to see what is the realm of the possible in terms of operating costs. As far as the efficiency, and Mayor, I know you asked previously about the projected ridership. The FDOT team used a model called the stops model. It's standard and improved by FTA to project ridership for these types of transit projects. It has to be used for FTA New Starts applications. The stops model is producing these estimates and I should emphasize that these numbers are based on, not at the beginning, but after five years of operation when we assume this, the system and its cost and operations will stabilize out. Normally there's a ramp-up period. You don't expect ridership to jump right up to the maximum right away. It usually takes, you know, four or five years to reach that. And that's what this, that's why we've used the five-year, it says at the top, year five of operations, which is 20, in this case, assumed to be 2029.
Vince, is the projected operations cost similar for each type of crossing of the New River?
That, I'm glad you asked that question. It's a very good question. There are some people that believe that depending on which option you choose, the operating cost will be higher. You might have recalled when Phil said, the Baskiel Bridges, the low and mid-level Baskiel Bridge require a full-time tender. So you've got a full-time staff, you know, night and day sitting there in addition to the additional mechanical equipment and moving parts, which increases the operating cost. We likewise expect to see for tunnels, given the pumps and the ventilation systems and other such things, an expectation for a higher operating cost. At this stage, the model is kind of assuming that all of the different options are relatively similar. We have some differences between worst, best and, and, and base, but we haven't differentiated the projects right now in operating costs because we haven't had the time to do an in-depth study of what those cost differentials would be. We're still waiting for some updated cost estimates, but at this stage, the operating costs are roughly assumed to be similar between all three, all four river crossing options.
Fair enough. Great, thanks.
I want to bring you down to the, the bottom part of this. You see the operating cost per trip, which we're expressing in $2,019. Why do we do that? Why do we deflate and go backwards in time from 2029 to 2019? We did that because we have data from 2019 on operating cost per trip so that we can compare this project or this projected project to what some of the other systems, what you're seeing nationally. And I'm not going to show you all the examples, but as it says here on this slide, right now, given our worst-case project assumptions, the operating cost per trip of $18.72 per, per trip is just slightly better than what Tri-Rail is doing in 2019 pre-pandemic. So we could say that, you know, Tri-Rail, I believe, is up around $20, $21 operating cost per trip. And a lot of people complain, a lot of people point to it, has lower ridership than we hope for, higher costs, et cetera. This project in a worst-case scenario would be not too different from Tri-Rail. But in the base case, the expectation is that this project, and again, it goes to some of the potential synergies and economies of scale, we would expect a project like this, hopefully to be not in the bottom third, but in the top third of national commuter rail operations. So that's the potential, that's what the numbers in the model currently show. So if anything, they might look a little bit optimistic. I know our administrator was a little bit concerned that these numbers might look a little more favorable than they might actually turn out to be, but it is what it is. This is where the model stands as we speak today. This next slide, and I apologize, these numbers might seem a little small, difficult to read, but this provides a similar breakdown of revenue and expenditures on the capital side. What is a project going to cost just to build? This does not include cost for the midlife rolling stock overhaul. This does not include reserve funds for capital replacement. Just looking at the construction of the project, again, for both, for all three scenarios, worst, base and best, it's basically showing for each of the four alternatives, what would be the projected capital cost as well as the capital revenue based on the different funding sources and, and grant funding opportunities. This graphic, this bar chart shows you just exclusively focusing on the cost of the New River Crossing. What are the different capital cost estimates comparing the low-level bridge, the mid-level, high-level bridge to the tunnel? I think these numbers were already presented, but I think the bar chart helps to give a better sort of visual appreciation of the, of the similarities between the two middle options, the high-level bridge and the mid-level Baskiel Bridge, and the relatively more dramatic differences between the tunnel and, and, and the rest. So it's-
Vince, are these, is this your financial analysis or the, the county's, or is this drawn from DOT's?
These numbers are DOT's estimates with added inflation. Their number for cost estimate was in, I believe, $20, $21. Is that correct, Phil? We had to inflate their 2021 values into the cost projected over the next seven years. The project would go through a two-year design and development process followed by a five-year construction. So we do need to factor in, I believe our model included a 2.7% inflation, which is much lower than we've seen over the past two years, but we believe a 2.7% inflation factor is a reasonable number to use. And that's why, that's why the tunnel cap, capital cost shows a little bit higher than $2 million as opposed to the $1.8 million 2021 estimate that FDOT provided. But the answer to your question is, these are FDOT's numbers inflated by 2.7%.
Okay. Jerry, I thought, I thought the high and the mid-level Baskiel Bridge were higher than these are representing. Is that, is, this is accurate for your, okay. They're accurate. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
And then, you know, people have talked about the SRTAX and projected additional funding for SRTAX, et cetera, et cetera. This, this graphic combines the operating cost deficits of the project with the capital cost deficits, revenue minus income and grants, for a total deficit over basically a 28, 27, 28-year period, all the way up to 2049, which is when the Broward SRTAX ends, right? The SRTAX was a 30-year SRTAX. It was passed in 2018, began in 2019. So at 2049 is when the funding source for all of this comes to an end. And all this shows is that depending on which option you choose, it would chew away a given percentage of the projected SRTAX revenues based on the initial estimates. I think we're $15.6 billion are the numbers on our, our public website for the SRTAX revenue projection. So this is the base case. This is not the worst case. I believe our county commissioners are going to be asking a lot of questions about, well, what if your assumptions are too optimistic or too pessimistic? We can look at the other scenarios as well, but-
And just go back, if you would go back there, Vince. So to the mayor's, I guess, question point was, correct my, if my thinking is right on this, that the New River Crossing was not included in the SRTAX funding?
The Broward commuter rail project as a whole was not included, not just the crossing-
Okay. The whole thing.
Entire project.
Okay.
Not included. So anything, we would need to have some unallocated residual funds-
Right.
-in order for this project to be viable. Yes.
Okay. Agreed. And that's what this is assuming is, if I'm tracking, this is assuming there will be SRTAX dollars allocated to this project.
This does not assume that. This is, this doesn't assume that. What it says is, based on the base case scenario, the deficit of what, either of these four options would consume this respective percentage or portion of the originally projected SRTAX budget as a whole. So-
Right.
If you, if, if there's 10% of the SRTAX projection that wasn't allocated, that was kind of a contingency or whatever, what this is showing is that the first three options, you might be able to do that because the base case is effectively 9%, not 10. But in the case of the tunnel, if there were only 10% available, you would not be able to do it because the base case of 17%, I believe the worst case is like 25%. You would have to spend between 17 and 25% of the SRTAX budget just to do this project. And we know that that would likely cannibalize, or there would be a high risk of needing to cannibalize the other county transport projects, whether it's the people mover at the airport, the airport to seaport rail project, the other light rail and bus rail transits throughout the county. That is, that would be the concern, I believe, from the county commissioner's perspective.
Sure.
So they're going to be looking at these numbers and asking really hard questions about, can we afford this? Yes or no?
Right. And, and again, it's completely up to the county commission, but if, if I heard you right, you're saying to make this project viable, SRTAX dollars would have to be dedicated to this. Is that what, is that what you'd said?
We, we know of no other alternative-
Perfect.
Dedicated funding source.
Yeah. I just want to, you know, I, I don't know all the funding sources. Okay. So that would have to happen. And then if it would, the projection on that, that graph is what percent of those unallocated it would, uh-
It's not a percentage of unallocated. That's the percentage of total.
Okay. Percentage of total SRTAX dollars. Right. So, and your point is above the 10% is, is going to be difficult because of the unknown revenue draw that's-
I just use 10% as an example. I am not sure what the exact percentage is. I will tell you this, there's a lot of municipalities, you know, by, by statute, that SRTAX has at least 10% going to the municipalities. The county is currently planning to give municipalities more than 10%. That's the current intention. But being able to provide more than 10% may be affected by these types of decisions.
Right. Yep.
I, I would, I would prefer not to go much further in talking about this because it, it kind of gets into the realm of the budget director and, and other people. But it's, it, suffice it to say, and you have already acknowledged this, it will be county commissioners making this decision.
Absolutely. Great. Thanks.
This slide here, I, I don't want to go back too much and, you know, this is really, it was FDOT's team and as well as some other engineering and tunnel experts that did peer reviews on the cost estimates. But the county decided that it would be worthwhile to do some research and look at the most up-to-date data on transit tunnel construction costs nationwide, including the most recent projects that have been mentioned in places like California and Seattle and New York. We have gathered this data. This is all from a Tunnel Business Magazine, an article that came out last year. The title of the top, the article was "Why Tunnels in the U.S. Cross Much More Than Anywhere Else in the World." But as you can see in the table on the left, looking down the cost per mile, these figures are in, the cost of the tunnel per mile for similar twin-bore transit tunnels of similar dimensions to what we're talking about here. What you'll see is that the costs in New York are exorbitant. They're hu, super high, right? And there's reasons for that. There's theories about the regulatory environment, the labor environment, environmental considerations and whatnot, also the density and existing build-out in New York City. But in the rest of the country, you're seeing lower costs, right? So you have Seattle, you have California. The table on the right puts this in kind of a summary range in New York, between one and a half and two and a half billion dollars per mile. If you look at the rest of the U.S., the cost range has been between 600 and 920 million over the past five years. This includes projects that are underway as we speak, under construction now. I did throw in the Port of Miami Tunnel on this table on the right, just to put that in the context. If you look at the total cost of that, which I believe was like 670 million dollars, but it was only a three-quarter mile long tunnel. If you basically add the additional, you know, put it on a cost-per-mile basis and, and build in inflation, that project was finished, I believe, in 2014. The cost of that tunnel was a billion dollars per mile. So all that to say, the current FDOT estimate of $560 million base per mile is actually much lower than any of these national examples, New York, California, Seattle. And therefore, from a county perspective, we are cautious about this. I mean, we, we do respect the estimates being made, but we're scratching our heads and asking, why are the FDOT estimates so low, given when you compare it to the rest of the country and, or even to the Port of Miami Tunnel? So- So this is something that we're looking at. Again, there's a lot of different opinions about this. But the bottom line is, we haven't seen any tunnels built in the United States at this cost level. Hopefully, this would be one of the first ones to do that. But yeah, I believe the base case or maybe the, the worst case in, in the case of the tunnel might need to be studied a little bit further because we might see that the cost gets closer to what we're seeing in the upper part of this table. And a final consideration is, the county, like the city, has renewed interest and emphasis on resiliency considerations, including sea level rise. This topic actually came up, I think it was someone from the public or one of the maritime industry people, raised the question about, well, how does the projected sea level rise and climate change impact your analysis and study? Right? So FDOT has been looking at this. We've actually, the county has shared some of our flood maps. We are preparing, on the county, to do a countywide risk assessment to look at all of our assets and to develop an updated resiliency plan. This project would obviously need to be included in that plan if it's approved and we go forward. But suffice it to say, what, what the map shows, what this graphic shows on the left is a flood map. I believe it is a, a NOAA Category 5 Hurricane Storm Surge map based on current sea levels, not on future projected sea levels. And what you'll see is the blue area on this map, the darker blue, I believe, is between one and two-foot flooding above the current mean sea level, the current gray level. The dark, or the lighter blue gets to be like two to three foot above that level. The bottom line is, the red oval shape shows where the, the location of the tunnel is along the FECR corridor, just to the west of Andrews Avenue. And it is, flooding is a consideration. The questions asked earlier about the elevation of the walls along the sides of the tunnel and the portals. The points raised by Phil about the need to have likely, as they have in New York, have covers for the tunnels so that they can cover and seal off the tunnel in case of a hurricane or storm, storm surge. It's pretty clear from this picture that, and, and from future projections of sea level rise, is that this, whether it's a tunnel or a bridge, it will be susceptible to flooding and possible storm surge scenarios. So in general, based on the Hurricane Sandy experience in New York City, where a good portion of the New York City, the MTA subway tunnels were flooded and put out of commission for weeks at a time. They had, I believe, about $7 billion worth of rehabilitation and repair to harden those assets. Of course, that was for a system-wide, many different tunnels across the city.
Excuse me, just a second. The blue area, as I'm looking at your key on the bottom, it shows the blue really just represents about two feet above normal, right? We're not looking.
Two to three feet, yes.
Two to three, well, one to three feet, depending upon the shade of the blue.
The dark blue is one to two, the lighter blue is two to three.
Right. I mean, it's not like, it's not like we're going to be inundated. We might as, if, if, I mean, if you have this, you know, doomsday scenario that the city's going to be overwhelmed with, with water, we might as well just turn off the lights and, you know, hop into our cars and take off, which is not the case. This is just, this is just one to three feet. And should we have retaining walls around the portal areas of the tunnel, we would certainly mitigate any impact it would have on the, on the tunnel scenario. Wouldn't that be true?
Correct. This, this is the, the legend. And you can see, as you get lighter in blue and down to green, it gets to higher flood elevation, five to six feet in the case of green. But Mayor, to your point, I want to go back and show you, it's not here in this presentation, but we have, this flood map is based on current sea levels. 50, 70 years from now, which, you know, the useful life of this tunnel or bridge is going to be 125 years minimum. The expectation for where the sea level is going to be at that time and how the flood map's going to look at that time will change dramatically. This is based, this flood map right here is based on the current sea levels. And it might not be conservative enough from a, a resiliency perspective. In fact, Dr. Gerardo, our resiliency officer, informed me, she actually provided, she provided some slides, but for some reason, they didn't get included in this presentation. But there, I think they're planning for 2070 to have a five or six-foot increase in sea level, which would dramatically alter this flood map, possibly adding, you know, two, three, four feet more onto this flood map. I mean, I'm not trying to say.
We're going to have more problems than just a tunnel or a bridge at that point. So I mean, I don't really think, we don't have to go there. I mean, the whole city will be inundated with water. So I think we get that part.
The final, the final slide here is just to provide some different perspectives, both pro-tunnel, anti-tunnel, or, or whatever. I'm not going to read them out to you, they're here. But basically, suffice it to say is that we did see, Mayor, I believe you had sent to FDOT, and we received copies, of a very large number of letters from various stakeholders, community groups, and developers expressing a very clear preference for the tunnel. And I, I think, the middle quote here is from the president of the Tarpon River Civic Association. There are several other developers and people who've made similar comments. The, the issue is, when you add, when you ask the academics and the, the resiliency community about their perspective, many of them see things differently. Again, their, their perspective, their vision is maybe longer term. They're not trying to flip real estate in two to three or five years. They're not trying to, you know, build for their, their generation. They're looking at future generations and their grandchildren. I thought that the, the quote from Claus Jacob, he's a, he's a PhD geophysicist at Columbia University, who has been working very closely with New York City's Metropolitan Transit Agency, the MTA, on various climate change scenarios and hardening strategies to ensure that they don't suffer another setback like they did in Hurricane Sandy. His perspective, again, he might have been traumatized by Sandy, is that the future for train transportation on the eastern seaboard is going up rather than down. James Cromar, his quote from the Broward MPO is more, well, if you are going to go down, just don't put your sensitive infrastructure down there. There are controls, there are switches, there are other things that when put below sea level or flood level, you run into serious problems. And this is what, again, what happened.
But I've spoken with Mr. Cromar, and he's, and, you know, you're giving it, you're, you're making it sound like he's against the tunnel, and I don't think he is. All he's saying is, don't put those systems below grade.
I'm not saying he's against the tunnel. I'm saying he's, he's provided some cautionary terms, which I think are, are relevant. But you're right. I've heard different people, including James, saying that they're very open or supportive of the idea of a tunnel.
Right. So this is, this, this is distracting to put these quotes here because they're taken out of context, and I don't really think they're instructive here.
Well, I, I apologize for that. The quote, actually, the, on the left, came from a seminar that was organized by the South Florida Business Roundtable. And they, they convened a number of experts on climate change and sea level rise to specifically talk about transportation infrastructure in South Florida. And there was a quite extensive conversation about, the debate about tunnel or bridge in Fort Lauderdale. And many of the comments, including this, there were some other comments made by the other professors from FAU, from other parts that were much more negative than this. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, but the point of the slide is that there are, there's a variety of views on this. There's not a consensus, especially when you pull in the resiliency people that have.
Well, we'll see whether there's a consensus or not. Right now, we just want to look at the finances. We'll go into that other part a little later.
Thank you for your time. Any final questions?
Any other questions at the gentleman?
I have questions in general, Mayor. I said, I have questions in general, but I'm not sure who they're directed to.
Wait, I didn't hear you.
Is my mic on?
Yeah, I think it's on.
I said, I have some questions in general. I'm just not sure to, to whom to address the questions to.
Are they regarding what he just presented, or are there other?
Just about the, this whole issue in general.
Well, what, we'll, they'll be of time to talk about that. We just, there, this, I think this was an opportunity to allow the Florida Department of Transportation and the county to present the information that they had to us so that we, as a commission, will be able to make a, an educated decision as to how we want to proceed. And there, is there anybody else that's going to make a presentation? Because it's.
I think we were going to hear from the MPO.
I'm sorry?
The order of events was potentially to hear from the MPO next and then have the commission discuss the topic.
Okay. Well, the thing is, it's quarter after one.
Correct.
And we have our conference meeting in 15 minutes.
Maybe we should look to Greg and see if, Greg, did you have any comments you wanted to offer? He say no. So.
All right. So I, I wanted to present some information also, which I could probably take the next 10 minutes in which to do it. If, if it, is it okay with the commission if I, okay?
I, I do want to have some time, though, to.
Yeah. And I, and I understand. And I'd be, and I will.
Yeah, let's just push the 1:30, I think, Mayor, to two or something.
Yeah.
So we have time.
That's right.
We'll probably, we'll probably be delayed about 15 minutes from our 1:30 meeting.
More than that.
We'll see how fast.
You got, all of us need to speak.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
And if you get 10 minutes, and we all get 10 minutes, we're going to go further. So I think we either need to think about, it's just my opinion.
You want to.
Think about what's on our conference agenda, and let's keep this moving forward so we'll know if we want to go tunnel or bridge, and we can start moving the train that way as opposed to, it may not be anything on our conference that is really worth rushing to. When this is very important, in my opinion.
This is very important.
But I don't think we have that, the, the conference agenda is that meaningful, set the second piece of it.
Wait, when you, when you say this, you're talking about the issues on the conference agenda? Or the?
Right. So we can extend it so everyone can talk, the people, commissioners, and not just shut it down after you do your 10 minutes and give us all an opportunity.
Well, do you want to continue the, you want to continue the workshop?
I think that's what he's saying.
Yeah. I want, I'd like to continue this discussion, Mayor, and delay the 1:30.
Okay. You want to delay the 1:30?
Delay the 1:30.
Okay. All right.
In other words, delay it, you know, till we have a good, robust discussion.
Yeah. So everybody can talk.
Which maybe is an hour or more.
Let's get going then. Let's get going.
Yeah, but we don't want to feel rushed. I mean, it's like you're rushing us.
Not rushing anybody.
Yeah, but you're saying, get going, and you're saying this, I mean, just, if you're going to do it, please allow us time, all of us to talk. That's all we're asking.
Not just then, not just ever.
I would never rush you, Commissioner.
You just did.
Okay. So I want to thank the participants in today's meeting who have, who have given us a good deal of information. I think the commission needed to see and hear a lot of what was said today. I want to thank the secretary and his staff for being here. I really thank you for taking the time out of your, out of your day. I just wanted to, to respond to a few things in connection with, with the bridge versus tunnel approach because I've been involved with this now for, you know, all of last year. As, the first time I got wind of the fact that they wanted to build a bridge through our city, I was very concerned about the impact that it would have and, and how, not just the cost of construction, but the social cost that it would have on existing infrastructure, neighborhoods, how it would completely transform our downtown, and how it would impact our downtown based on what we're trying to do in this, in this very intense, you know, highly competitive downtown redevelopment area that we're seeing a tremendous amount of investment happening, and, and how it would impact that. So as we look to the downtown, as we know, a lot of the developers have come to us, and, and these are just, on this slide, you just see a few examples of the buildings that are intended to be built in and around the, the rail area. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is whether or not these parties will continue to think about this area as a place to invest. Over the last few weeks, we've asked certain developers to give an opinion as to whether or not they feel that, that this area would be impacting their development projects. We received several dozen letters, which I've included in a packet to, to you, in which each and every one of them, Stiles Corporation, Kerschner, Ossie Simbel, Jim Ellis, all of whom have indicated that this would have a tremendous negative impact on their projects. And some have even indicated that they would pull out, knowing that their projects would fail to think that a trail, a rain, a train bridge was going to be located right up against their buildings. Here you see examples of, of what's, what exists today. And as we move to the next slide, you'll see where, this is an example of even our own joint government center that we're contemplating, and how the rail bridge would be right, right next to the, to the structure, impacting not just views, but also sound and, and everything else that comes along with, with the bridge. Why this is of tremendous concern to me, and I think of concern to the city, is that downtown Fort Lauderdale has, has nearly a $30 billion annual economic impact equivalent to hosting, you know, the Super Bowl every weekend. Downtown Fort Lauderdale has a greater impact citywide and regionally than other cities like Austin and Atlanta. And Fort Lauderdale's population continues to grow. We continue to become a very popular place for people who are moving to South Florida. Fort Lauderdale is the number one choice for many, many people. You just have to look in and around this neighborhood, how many new buildings are being built or contemplated. And just look at this 2030 projection that the DDA put together. We, we, we have a lot of growth to, to absorb, and how do we do that? Do we do it in a, in the, in a way that makes sense in integrating all the, all the aspects of infrastructure so that they allow neighbors to live in an environment that is healthy, that is convenient, and at the same time, that creates an urban experience that is not harsh, but is, is something that they came to Florida for? They left places like Chicago and New York, Brooklyn, places that, that, you know, have these elevated rails, and they're trying to escape those environments. Now we're just bringing them back to Florida, which is really not a choice that I feel that they should have to make. As we flip to the next slide, we see how, for example, in the Northwest CRA, we're going to see, as I mentioned earlier, the Sisdrunk Marketplace. It will, the, according to the, to the study that was done by FDOT, the taking would have to be a significant taking. That business would probably have to go out of business. And everything along that right-of-way that they would have to buy, they've originally indicated it's only going to be 6.8 mi, 6.8 acres of, of right-of-way that they would have to buy. But in fact, it's over 70 acres that they would have to buy. And that would, not only just the purchase of it, but how it would impact everything along the corridor. And, and that, to me, is all part of the social costs of what this means. Originally, when we thought about doing, you know, commuter rail service, we thought it was going to be an enhancement to the quality of living here in South Florida. But, you know, the railroad tracks have, have been, to me, a, a wall between communities for too many generations. And if we now consider a bridge to be added to that division, where people on the east side and the west side will, will, will still suffer that separation. The Biden administration and the Department of Transportation have long since said that we need, we need to connect communities. We need to enhance demographics so that we become communities that interact with one another. And by building a bridge through the middle of these, of our city is just going to create further division and, and diminish the interaction between communities. This is not what we want. We wanted to create one Fort Lauderdale. And by building a tunnel, we open spaces. We create open space. We don't have to worry about, you know, artwork and, and historical enhancements that, that are going to be used to sort of pay for deficiencies that a bridge is going to bring to our community. In fact, just to have the clean, clear, open space in our downtown would be a great enhancement. And let nature take over, and let us be able to breathe in the open space that, you know, that a tunnel would create. As it is, we have a few open spaces. We have a Riverwalk, we have our Historic District. This is going to plow right through our Historic District. It's going to cut right through it. All those buildings that are now part of the history of Fort Lauderdale will be under a bridge. And probably some of the trestles will cut right through the, the front yard of, of all the buildings that we cherish as our historic history. So, you know, this is not what I feel it should be the future of Fort Lauderdale, especially as we're looking to create sustainability, as, create an environment in which people are going to embrace Fort Lauderdale, not say, oh, it's same-old, same-old urbanism. We have a chance now to do something that's going to impact generations to come. Let's do it right, instead of having to do it right now. Let's do it in a way that is going to promote sustainability and a, and a wonderful urban experience, as opposed to just looking at dollars and cents and saying, oh, well, this is the best deal, so we need, we need to go that way. That's not how you build cities. And when I saw that quote from that professor Jacobs, I believe his name was, who said, well, the best way to run trains through a city is on a bridge. Well, let me tell you something. Robert Moses used to say in the 60s, well, the best way to put cars through New York City is to, is to build highways right. right through the middle of it. And he wanted to build a highway right through Greenwich Village and take down Washington Square Park. He, he already got his way when he built, when he built the Cross Bronx Expressway and cut through dozens of neighborhoods, established neighborhoods, just to, so that cars had the way. Well, cars are not king anymore. We are going to be a mass transit society at each decade that we live here. So let's embrace it, let's do it so that, so that it connects all forms of transportation, and at the same time, let's do it in a way that makes sense for our community, and not just doing it so that, you know, we can expedite a transportation system. I do believe that financially, we'll be able to find the sources of, of, of funding that we're going to need to. And today, one of our, one of the, uh, construction companies has, is sitting here in the audience this afternoon, who has come forward and has said, hey, these estimates are far beyond what is real. Because keep in mind, originally, FDOT said it was going to close, cost close to $4 billion to build a tunnel. And guess what? We reached out, we reached out to these companies and found out that these people who build, who build tunnels all over the world have said that it's not only going to cost less than half, but we can do it more quickly, and we can do it more efficiently. And, and they have the experience. Keep in mind that all these great architectural bridges that you see around the world, like the Golden Gate Bridge, and the, and the, the bridge that's south of Tampa, over on the west coast of Florida, why are they so significant? Well, they go over waterways. You don't talk about, I haven't seen one architecturally significant bridge that goes through a city. In fact, what, the experience that we have, and I'm kind of shocked that we saw this morning at presentation using the Overtown area in Miami as an example of how, how pathways for vehicles are a positive thing, when in fact, that's the poster child for poor urban design and planning, cut right through an established neighborhood, devastated that community, cut it in half, and it's, and for years it suffered under, under the, the shadow of a, of a, of a highway that is still not recovered from. We do not want to repeat that mistake, we do not want to see Fort Lauderdale take that direction. And I feel that we have the resources, we have the talent, we just need to have a common, shared goal to make sure that this becomes a reality. So, here, so as I said, these costs can be, can be covered by both federal funding, state funding, as well as, uh, local funding, we have the resources, we just need to make sure that we have the ability to, to gather work on this and make it a reality. So, I'm going to leave it open now to other members of the commission, and, you know, and I know Vice Mayor, you have some questions, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, a couple of questions, I don't know if it's state or county, so I don't know, maybe both of you online coming up. So I was listening to the 85-mile track that we're discussing from Dade to Palm Beach. Is this portion in Fort Lauderdale the only section that we are considering, you know, having the bridge or the raised train track?
Yes, it's the only river cross, it's the only river crossing that's traversable by boats with masts and things, so it's the only.
So, the city of Fort Lauderdale is the only municipality kind of having this conversation about a raised train track for this, the coastal commuter.
Correct, the, the station in Miami is already built, and that is a raised track.
That's raised also, okay, so that's already built, I was just, I was just wondering if other cities were having this problem, or if we're having it because we're the only.
We're the lucky ones.
We're the, okay, so just trying to understand that, so from that, thank you for answering that question. Most of the parcels that need to be acquired, are they, once again, they're mostly in Fort Lauderdale? Whether it's eminent domain, or we're buying them, or however that's going to happen? The other cities will, they don't really need to have any, any additional parcels purchased? Because it's already on, it's already at grade?
Yes, most of the property you see is, are parcels you see listed are identified with the crossing of the river, be it a tunnel, or be it a bridge.
Okay.
There may be parcels at other locations in relation to stations.
Okay, so once again, we're, that's kind of an.
A lot of those parcels are aerial easements.
Okay.
So, the bridge is up in the air and it overhangs property a slight bit, that's just drawn as a line, and that may cause some confusion, people think a building is going to disappear, when the bridge is 40 feet above it. Anyway, there'll be a lot of detail on that at the Alternates Workshop, we'll have all those maps, and we'll actually have right-of-way estimates at that stage.
Okay, thank you, and once again, just trying to understand kind of our, our issues compared to others, because I have heard a lot of positive comments from other elected officials, you know, the city of Oakland Park, the city of Pompano Beach, so I'm just trying to understand how we may be a little bit different. So, we're, we had four options presented today, in February, the county is going to vote. Does the county pick one? It seems like yes, the answer is yes, they would pick one locally preferred alternative, or do they rank the four choices?
The next step is to pick one locally preferred alternative.
Okay, so that's our only.
That's the one you're going to try and pursue with funding to the federal government.
Okay, so our only option as a city and county and all the partners is just to pick one, and then proceed forward with the funding, we can't look at two?
Well, you can do anything, but if you want to pursue federal funding, you got to show them your locally preferred alternative.
So that's the only option, so the county, when the county votes in February, their only option is just to pick one?
Yeah, because they're trying to fund the project, so.
Yeah, now I understand.
If they said a bridge and a tunnel, and they're advancing these two things with different costs, how much money would they ask for? What's the benefit cost ratio? It changes greatly, depending on which one you pick.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm just trying to think through to see if we get, can get a little bit more detail, because I feel like I, I don't quite have the level of detail I need at this point about the cost necessarily of the, the tunnel versus the bridge, and even our next conversation, we're talking about five ashwater treatment plants, so we tried at the same time to do the P3 and the RFP parallels path, just to understand and get more data, but I understand, we're, they're going to pick one, okay, that answers that, hold on a second. So as the city of Fort Lauderdale, when we go to rank, not rank, vote later today on the resolution, I don't know, I would feel more comfortable voting on an option that gives us, well, maybe more of a ranking, like this or this, you know, this is our first choice, but this could be my second choice, because I still feel like we as a city have to make a decision between what of those three bridges, the heights we would want to consider, and I don't think we've had enough of that conversation too. So, I would like us to kind of come up with, is it a tunnel, which I think we all think a tunnel makes sense, or would it be this bridge? So that's just in my mind, so you guys can think that over before tonight. Okay, my last question, sorry, Mr. O'Reilly? So the models we saw, the four of them, do any of them go over or under? So that the, the train would not interfere with traffic on Davie, Broward, and Sunrise? Does any model go under or over so that our traffic would not be impacted on those three roads?
The mid-level and high-level bridge go over Broward, the tunnel goes under Broward.
Right, what about all three, Davie, Broward, Sunrise?
To answer your question, it could, the tunnel can go under Sunrise and Davie.
It can.
Yes.
It could go all the way to Jacksonville if you wanted it to.
Right.
But, but in the plan we have, it gets out of the ground prior to Sunrise. You could extend it further north, it's just money.
The, the existing plan, Vice Mayor, goes, the tunnel goes under Davie.
Under Broward.
And under Broward.
And it pops up before Sunrise?
Up, yes, at Sunrise, or, or, yes.
What about the bridge, does the bridge empty, does the bridge end on the north side of Sunrise?
No, no, south of Sunrise.
It's south of Sunrise, yeah.
I'm just wondering if that could be a consideration, and I don't know if you can change, I don't know how far this whole project is, Sunrise is bad for traffic, I, I mean, I think it would make sense
Especially with that you develop.
to not impede the traffic on Sunrise, just, once again, a thought, I don't know where this, where we are in the process.
Commissioner, just bear in mind that, over the last two years, mostly your impact at Sunrise has been freight trains, they'll still be there.
Yes, I understand.
When Bright Line's back operational now, so they impact Sunrise.
Right.
And then if these trains were added, it's more trains.
Right, yeah, I understand, so I'm thinking it'd be great to get Bright Line and those other trains off of the road, just a thought, okay, hold on, I know you're not there yet, so.
And Vice Mayor, if I could, just one other point, and please correct me if I'm wrong Jerry on this, but the mid and high-level bridge have an entrance at Davie, so they don't go under Davie or past Davie. So Davie, is that, is that right?
They do not go under Davie.
So it's going to impact Davie significantly.
So I think when we're doing something, and I don't know where we give input for this, it would be great if we could not impact Davie, Broward, Sunrise, just a thought, okay, hold on, let me finish. So we're connecting to FL at Fort Lauderdale Airport with this rail, correct?
It's a proposed station, yes.
There's a proposed station, so I'm wondering if any, if FLL and any of the enterprise funding can be used as a source of revenue for this, is that a possibility? I know our airports, FXC is the only thing that has money in our city, what about FLL?
Financial partners can.
I'm just, just curious, because we talk about maintenance and operation, and we're talking, going to take up 10% of this whole budget and stuff, just wondering if anybody else can contribute to either the capital or the maintenance and operation, or maybe FLL and FXC.
This project to work, you're going to have to get money from as many people as you possibly can.
Right, but when we're looking at saying, well, this is going to take big, blank percentage of the SRTAX funding over the years, I'm, I'm just wondering if we could tap into a few more, or an enterprise fund, just, just thinking of that. Okay, my last question is, can we add additional stations later? The answer is probably yes, I'm sure we can do anything, but could we add, for example, my district is off of Cypress Creek, could we come back one day and, and add a, a stop off of Cypress Creek if need be?
So can stations be added, yes, but typically there's set distances you want to keep so the speed of the train keeps up, and you.
Okay.
Meet your times, but, yeah, anything can be done.
Anything can be done, just, just curious, not advocating that. So, in summary, I do support the tunnel, Mayor, I, I do, but for me, doing nothing is not an option. So I would like to maybe have a conversation as a body, what we support maybe as the second alternative, or if we could maybe include that, and I don't know where the resolution vote will go, and I don't know exactly how firm that language is, so we can talk about that later.
We can talk about that tonight, yeah.
Talk about that later, and so also, all the letters of support we've received about the tunnel, I appreciate those letters, but once again, I, I'm curious in my mind, do those letters say, I support the tunnel or nothing, or I support the tunnel first, and then a bridge second? Because I think that's kind of what we're communicating tonight, right? Is it tunnel or nothing, or is it tunnel or this particular bridge for, for Plan B? And then I'm also thinking, Mayor, I know you, you visually, you're thinking this bridge could cut our city in half, but I'm just thinking a little bit more, especially with the underline down in Miami, it's a 10-mile linear park, and it's under the rail. So I do think we have some opportunities, and, and maybe this is where Steve and I can come together. Steve, it combines the arts and the parks, the linear, the underline, we could, we could meet halfway, maybe.
The art that I saw were dominos painted on the trestles underneath.
Right, but there are, there are opportunities for people to come together, so it, it could be an opportunity also, as opposed to a divider, where we could really bring the east and west together, so I, I, I think there.
There's also the taking of property, too, remember that.
I, I understand, but you know what, transportation to me is, I think we just have to have it, and I'm, I'm willing to, to concede some other issues to have the transportation we need in our regional three counties.
Okay, all right, Commissioner McKenzie.
Can someone explain to me how tunnel rights? If you wanted a tunnel under my building or my property, how does that work?
Secretary, Mr. Secretary, weren't we thinking of the tunnel going under the right-of-way of the railroad tracks?
It will be partly under the railroad right-of-way, but partly under private right-of-way. And Commissioner, I didn't bring an attorney here, and we haven't dealt with.
No, I'm just, I just want to know, because if you're going to take
Yeah.
the pool, and the, and the basketball court, and, I'm just, hold on, and part of SIS Trump Market,
So.
and the junkyard I saw in that picture, your, your picture's what made me ask this question. So if we're going to tunnel under that junkyard, who gives us permission to go under that junkyard?
I, I cannot answer that, but that would have to be resolved, what property rights are needed.
I know with the tunnel, we can, you know, there's nobody, nobody, you know, there's a state or federal.
The pool, the pool stays.
No, but, you're laughing, we have some serious choices here to make today. I'm okay either way, because we've been taking properties since the beginning of time. I'm sure we can navigate around that if we chose a bridge, and I see now, some of the people that wanted a bridge and were complaining to me, from the onset of the bridge, when the tunnel was put out there, they wanted the bridge. Now I hear that folks want the tunnel, I think either one of these is fine. If the majority of the folks want to go with a tunnel, I don't have a problem with a tunnel, but I don't think we're going to have choice A and B. I think we're going to make a choice here, you guys can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, and then the county's going to make a choice, and, and based on our strength and communications with them, they may or may not accept what we put out there. So let's say we put the tunnel out there, they say bridge, who wins that fight? Or that?
The people.
Argument.
The people win the fight.
No, that's easy for you to say, but is there someone here that can answer that question? If the county says they want a tunnel, and we say a bridge, who wins that?
So my opinion would be, nobody wins in that case, unless you want nothing built. So, to, to get anything built here, this region is going to have to prevent, present a unified front to the federal government and to the state government to help capture funds. So, this region has already gone through the wave, so, so we've gone through a process, and then we, we, we stopped, and we handed back money. So the federal government is going to expect to see all the partners, that's every city along the corridor, or every area along the corridor, unified on what the locally preferred alternative is. And if it's not unified, I expect they'll say, well, take your time and get unified, and then come back to me. That, that would be the rational decision, so I, I, I don't know exactly what the county commission would do, but I think they have to get to the stage where they can present, and the city, and, and not just this city, every, every city where there's a station.
Right, right, right.
Say, this is the right project for us, this is what we want, and this is what we're trying to secure your federal funds for, or state funds.
So, Commissioner, can I just tell you that in my conversations with several of the county commissioners, their response is, we will be looking to what the city wants.
That's not what my conversation is, when I had conversations with them, so.
So you're saying that they'll override any decision that we make?
I'm not saying they'll override it, but I'm just, I'm just saying, what if they do something totally different from us? Who, how do we?
How do we reconcile the difference?
Yeah, how do we reconcile that? Because I know, we can't have a one project to go for a dedicated funding source or sources. We got to start out with one, so we all have to be on the same page.
Right.
And I would love to be on the same page. With them, I'm sure we're going to come out on the same page, I'm sure of that, but I'm just curious as to when it gets over there, and if it's something different, what happens to us?
Maybe we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but I think.
Bridge? Bridge?
Gee, I didn't do that on purpose, did I? So, you know, we'll get, when we get to that point, we'll deal with it, but I think what the secretary is saying is that we have to come up with a single preferred alternative, and.
Yeah, if I had to pick one of them, I would just, I would go what the people want, they, they want a tunnel, they get a tunnel, but I know a tunnel's very expensive. I know it won't happen in my lifetime here as a commissioner, maybe on the other side, if I make it there. But I would go with the tunnel, but I just wanted the, the answer to those two questions.
Is a commission in heaven?
I don't plan to go into heaven anytime soon, Steve.
What other side?
I'm 20 years younger than you, so.
I thought you said on the other, when you get to the other side.
Other side, meaning the county, everybody got that except you.
Thank you. No, I got it, don't worry, I got it. What's the date of that again?
It's the commissioner.
It could be the dementia, anyway.
What's the date of that again?
That'd be November, sir.
Okay.
But I do want to move forward with the train.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. First of all, Mr. Secretary, thank you so much for being here, and I appreciate the team and all of the work involved here, and I appreciate this workshop very much, so thank you for all of that information. I, I do share my colleagues' thoughts, I, I really do think that the tunnel is the way that we need to be unified here, and I'm really hoping that the county will feel that way. I'm cautiously optimistic, although, I don't know, I'm, I'm sort of actually happy that this is not part of the one cent SRTAX project, because based on our record of getting those funds, we would be in big trouble if this was part of that, so I'm really happy that this is not part of that process. But I, I really do believe that, what's wrong?
Nothing, nothing.
When you get to the other side, maybe you can work on that, Commissioner.
I think I might stay, run for mayor. Uh huh, yeah.
Okay.
Focus, Commissioner.
I'm going to stay focused, but in, in all seriousness, I really do think that we need to have a unified front. I did want to ask you a question, we had a while ago a presentation about some of the Sunrise. We had a while ago a presentation about some of the Sunrise FDOT projects and I'm wondering how those might interface. Are we still looking, is FDOT still looking at the overhead, the overpass from around the Gateway Cinema Federal Highway Sunrise, that intersection? Is that still moving forward? Because I'm wondering how that would connect with this project if it was elevated.
That project you're talking about is in a PDNE study, a project development study, so similar to this type of study, except not as much interest it seems.
Is that ahead of this or is it being coordinated or?
It's on a separate track.
PDNE hasn't started yet. It's funded in... We can get to the exact details, but it hasn't started yet.
Okay, I appreciate that. But I think in terms of, you know, also you had mentioned something that was a little bit different that we heard earlier from the county in terms of the benefit cost analysis. Because are you convinced that we will be separating this New River Crossing from the project?
Hundred percent convinced.
Okay, so we're not going, okay, so that's good. And then it'll be up to us to pursue that because you said obviously it would really be detrimental if we included that in terms of going forward.
Well, it just wouldn't meet the benefit cost. So you would end up with a project that could meet the benefit cost like Vince said and then try and tackle the problem of how do I solve the crossing and Fort Lauderdale Station?
Okay.
Big cost.
Okay, but I think that in terms of the LPA, Mayor, I'm all in on going forward and doing everything we can to work with all of our partners to make sure that we have that kind of a unified voice. But I do share also the vice mayor's concerns about not doing anything on this. So I'm always wondering what our Plan B will be.
Well, I think we have to have a Plan A.
I'm fine with that. But I just want to make sure that we're just not left in the lurch if, for whatever reason, but I'm really hoping that FDOT and the county will support the fact that this commission, obviously we still need to hear from Commissioner Sorenson, but I think it's clear that the commission really wants to see a tunnel here under the New River. And I think that, you know, the volume of letters that we've received from leaders throughout the community, businesses throughout the community, agencies throughout the community, hopefully you've seen all of those, but it's been really a tremendous outpouring of one voice saying a tunnel. The only thing I read differently was there was one suggestion that maybe the tunnel should be for automobiles and just not necessarily just the trains, but, which I thought was interesting, they actually compared it to maybe we should do something like between England and France. And that was the only thing I saw different in the letters. The rest were all pretty much in sync saying, let's go forward with, you know, this tunnel. So again, Mayor, I agree, but I do share some of those concerns and we can have that discussion tonight because I have seen some kind of cool things. I don't think it has to be the dominoes that you focused on, Mayor, in terms of under the bridge, but I think there are some cool things. We've seen high-line projects, we've seen underlying projects. They even did a really cool thing with the old unused 70-mile bridge now in the Keys. How cool is that?
That's real cool.
It is very cool what they did in terms of recreation and there and people are loving it. So I don't want to necessarily say, oh my gosh, if we don't get the tunnel, there's nothing we can do, but that's my only concern, so I guess I share that concern with the vice mayor. But I'm all in on the tunnel, so.
Can I ask Steve a question?
Yeah.
You made the analogy of, you agree with the vice mayor, I think we all would agree with her, but if A, which now looks like tunnel...
Right.
B is just a bridge. Then we have to figure out how the next bridge is.
Well, if it's A and the tunnel fails, then it has to be B.
It's a bridge, that's what I'm saying.
Or no commuter rail through Fort Lauderdale.
C, okay.
So there is a C.
But I think no commuter rail through Fort Lauderdale would be a mistake.
All right, well, that's a discussion we can have.
We can have that discussion. I also would like us eventually...
How would cars play in this if we want to go on 3.2 miles? Explain that to me. You said having cars go on it.
Yeah, where would cars fit into this tunnel?
No, one of the letters that we received said that they actually thought there should be another alternative. They were looking at another alternative. I think it was actually from, was that from Mr. Hansberry? Mr. Hanbury, I think, wrote that letter.
Where would cars play into this?
Well, no, the suggestion was that actually cars could go under the river. You could just drive under the river as just a passenger automobile.
How many cars would go through?
I didn't write the letter, I'm not, this is not me.
Come on, we got to move on.
I just mentioned it.
Okay, all right.
I'll give you the, go check the letters.
Concluded your remarks?
I am so concluded.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sorenson, last word.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, and bottom line is I share sentiments of all of you. I think bridge is much preferable.
You mean tunnel?
Tunnel, sorry, tunnel is much preferable to bridge, yes, thank you. Tunnel is much preferable to bridge. The, a couple of questions though, and Jerry, can you help clarify a couple of things? I just want to understand kind of the totality of the team here. So we've got DOT, we've got Broward County, just kind of everyone that kind of be involved in this in some form or fashion. We've got Florida East Coast Industries, right? And who are they? Just so we, everyone understands.
So FEC own the right-of-way. They own that 100-foot wide corridor, they own the tracks. They own the property and you would have to have their approval in some fashion to be there. Or put a tunnel under their property or build a bridge on top of their property. So they're a key player. Brightline is a key player because they hold the passenger easement over that right-of-way.
And I think Brightline falls under FECI, do I have that?
A team of attorneys when they're negotiating.
Okay. And then there's FECR, right?
There's a web of FEC, but...
So for example, I think it's FECR that would, if, part of where I'm getting at is freight. Let's talk about freight. So could freight possibly roll through a tunnel? I think the answer, correct or wrong, that I've heard is, it's possible, but I think we would need FECR maybe to approve that.
Yes.
That, am I heading in the right direction? Okay. So that's something, Mayor, I don't know if you've had any discussions.
You'd have to design the tunnel to accommodate them, to currently it's designed just for passenger.
Okay. So I don't know, Mayor, if that's been discussed at all?
Well, it has been discussed and your mayor has taken the initiative and is reaching out to the freight company and we plan to have a meeting soon to start the discussion. But that's all I have to say, starting the discussion.
So the proposed tunnel now?
What's that?
The proposed tunnel we're talking about cannot handle freight.
It can, but the question is, do they want it to go underground? That's really the issue.
The proposed design can't. So remember, it cannot, because we, the approaches into the tunnel go on a certain slope and it's a steep slope and that accommodates passenger freight. If you were using freight trains, you'd go on a much shallower slope. So that length that was introducing into the tunnel was 1,500 feet. You'd be up to a, they'd have to get significantly longer because you're going slower down because freight trains...
The gradient is more gentle with the freight.
Way more gentle.
So would you go longer?
So you'd be able to accommodate more streets.
Well, no, because you're going at such a gentle slope, at some stage you'll start cutting them off or else have to bridge them. There is no engineering problem that can't be solved with money. Absolutely not.
I agree with you, exactly.
So our mayor is going to write the check.
Okay. So Mayor, that's something I'm interested, it sounds like you are too. I mean, I think maybe we all would be interested.
All interested.
Exploring.
Because you, you know...
I think you're right, because that other track is going to be there no matter what and if we can eliminate that, this whole thing is like a win-win. Right now we're just winning, taking care of one, stopping traffic that would normally have two stops for the marine industry, but if we can get rid of the other one, I think it's a win-win.
But the thing is, the thing is, excuse me, Mr. Secretary, I just want to point out that the, we haven't seen it yet, but the number of trains that are going to be added to the passenger line is going to be significantly greater than what we are experiencing right now. Even Brightline is working in a diminished capacity right now, but once they're back in, you know, full force, plus the commuter lines, which they estimate to be another like two to three dozen more trains a day, you're talking about significant impact on the river as well as the streets going east-west. So that's really what we're talking about today, okay?
Okay, yeah, a couple other questions. Let me get there, Jerry, and thanks for being here, Jerry, this is great. Let's see, you mentioned, I think he said maybe the phrase was alternatives workshop?
Yes.
And tell us what that is and when that happens?
So that happens, what's the date?
January 27th to virtual and then first on January 30th.
Okay.
Go to the website, register.
And that's where we lay all this out with the right-of-way maps, we'll have people there to explain it, we'll have the estimates at that stage, we'll have all these drawings on big boards, so people can see everything at the same time and become informed.
Okay, great. Excellent. The, is, and again, I kind of started to get at this with you, but just wanted to kind of get a final piece on this. Any, if this city commission were to today say, we would like A but are open to be option B, is, does that, is that a negative stance? Would you recommend waiting till the alternative workshops happen or would you feel comfortable us making a statement like, we prefer A and are open to B?
I don't think that matters to the project if you do, if you do that. Ultimately, when Broward County are making the decisions, right, they got to find a way to fund it. So they've got a choice between these four alternatives and the one we never show, which is the no-build alternative, obviously. You have to find a financial plan that can come together to build whatever's come up with. If you extend it north to Sunrise or south to Davie, it's just more money. The federal government program, we know this would qualify for about 600 million worth of a project with the ridership we're seeing. That's just everything besides how you cross the river. So that's where it's, the river, what way it's crossed, those costs are a biggie. The normal nationwide is you scrimp and save and cut everything you can just to get your project built. So it'll take an alternate funding strategy to get a tunnel address. So I think you got to crack where that money is going to come from before you go after the transit or do something a bit different.
Okay, all right. So great, again, you're good with us, as I suggested, one.
Yeah.
I think, okay, great, I'll leave it there. Mayor, that was it for Jerry, I had a question for Phil Purcell, if I can ask him to jump up here, if that's all right?
Is Mr. Purcell here?
Phil, can you? And then, let's see, Vince, where did Vince go? There you go, Vince. My question for you, and you can like walk up if you want, just answer this. My question for you, Vince, is, do you foresee, again, you don't know, you know, the thinking of the county commission, but would you be comfortable with us taking a position today saying, we prefer A and are open to B? Is there any negative impact to that of you? Phil, my question for you, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Is the high-level bridge is 80, the high fixed level, fixed bridge is 80 feet high? I think the FPAN lines are close to that or some, in other words, does 80 feet, does the 80-foot-high bridge limit marine traffic? It's my question.
Not at all. Clears everything and Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, thanks. You know, again, we just compare it, so if you look at 17th Street Bridge, new construction, it's 55 feet. If you look at when 95 was built or CSX, which operates on Tri-Rail Track, 55 feet. So we know that 55 or 56-foot bridge works.
Okay.
And an opening bridge, the sailboats and stuff that visit the other yards that are capped by I-95 can't go there unless they drop their mask. Everybody else can go to the other yards also. But it is important, the big thing what we want to take away, we'd love to see a tunnel. No build's just not an option. We can't do several more decades, as the mayor just pointed out, and we have a good relationship with Brightline, we have a good relationship with FEC, but you can't add another 50 trains at grade at Broward and over the river and expect our industry to survive. We're already working with the Coast Guard on a daily basis to try, there's a regulation, it caps Brightline at 36 trains. That's not good for growth, that's not good for commuter rail, it's not anything, and we can't change that reg. Our industry is open about 10 minutes out of the hour on that river during the business hours. At night, obviously, it's open more. When it was just freight, it wasn't a problem. So we need infrastructure at the end of the day. We're dealing with a 100-year-old bridge, we're the sixth-largest metropolitan area in the country, we're the third-largest state, lets all of us grow up, spend the money, whether it's a tunnel or a bridge, but waiting another two decades and then allowing 50 additional trains to run at grade will destroy our industry.
Okay. And when you say bridge, it's if, so tunnel seems like your number one choice if you could choose.
It would be fantastic.
Tunnel would be number one, second, I'm assuming, would be a 80, the high fixed bridge.
56 would be fine.
And 56, is that what the mid-level basketball is?
That's the mid-level, yeah.
56, okay, great. So that's, that's perfect. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Vince, just want to get your feedback on that question. The county, yeah.
That's a really good question. I mean, so the county commissioners have the authority to make a final decision about which option they prefer.
Right.
They've got the financial responsibility to look at this project and the rest of the portfolio of projects that they're considering supporting across the board. And whether or not they think they can support this project and all the other ones, given whatever option they choose, that's their decision to make. I think if they feel their hands are tied or if one of those cities makes an endorsement for one option versus the other, we can't stop you from doing it, but on the other hand, if you do it and their final decision is different, that's a problem because as Jerry made very clear, it's not going to go forward if there's not a single unified preferred alternative identified that people are comfortable with living. I mean, I'm going to tell you a little bit, like right now, that system-wide transit study that's analyzing all of the other projects, light rail, bus rapid transit, airport projects, airport to seaport, results of that are coming out later this summer, June-ish for preliminary estimates. And when you got those numbers in hands, it becomes a little bit easier to say, hey, we have enough money or we don't have enough money to do all this stuff that was in the Surtax budget, plus, how much is left over? Is it enough, yes or no? I'll tell you my instinct right now is that a history of capital infrastructure projects of this magnitude, large transportation infrastructure, you don't see too many examples of projects that come in significantly under budget. The trend is, they normally come in over budget and they normally have certain delays. All the tunnels that were on the list nationally have all been delayed, pandemic or otherwise has been caused. So I guess my instinct on this is, if I were a commissioner, I'd be very cautious and very concerned about taking overly optimistic assumptions right now and therefore...
But that's with any project?
That's with any project, Mayor.
Whether it be the low bridge, the medium bridge, the high bridge, the tunnel, a road, anything.
Yes.
So the numbers are all going to be flexible.
Yeah. One final consideration, and this is me personally, I'm not going to speak on behalf of a commissioner, the county or anybody else. I'm just going to say that in my experience studying public policy, I went to graduate school for two years and I've been working as a consultant or as an official for many years, for decades. You know, public funding decisions like this are very important, they're very significant. It's not a single project focus, right? The money you spend on this project is money that you might not be spending on other projects. And I'm not just talking about BRD or LRT or whatever, I'm talking about, there's a limited pot of funding for government entities to use for social programs, for racial programs...
But this is not going to impact social programs, this is transportation infrastructure. Why are you even bringing this up? Are you saying that we're going to not have, we're not going to have preschool lunches and breakfast for kids because we're going to build a tunnel versus a bridge?
One of the largest portions of the current Surtax budget are bus transit operating costs and subsidies to cover the deficit for bus and other forms of transportation that benefit normally the segments of the population that have lower income, including different racial groups that use different modes of transportation. So all I'm saying is that money that's spent on this project may need to come from other projects and other modes of transport and other types of initiatives. And that's, all I'm saying is, you need to be careful about the money you spend and I'm saying is, you need to be careful about the money you spend, and make sure you don't overspend and do a cost-ineffective project that has a huge cost per passenger. If you take the most expensive options, and you have to pay effectively $30 or $40 for each passenger that gets on that train, ask yourself every day, every year, do you want to be paying for people $30 to get on this train? That's how much the subsidy would be.
So what is the impact going to be on, obviously, you want a bridge, so what is the impact going to be on the communities through which a bridge is going to be built, in terms of the taking of their buildings, the taking of their homes, the taking of their expectations of the type of neighborhood they live in, the destruction of our historic district? What are the costs there? Have you calculated that? Is that part of your calculation, social costs? I mean, I just think that you're taking this whole conversation in another direction, and I don't think you have the competence to discuss. So why don't we just end the conversation right now, and not try to steer the discussion in a way that you clearly have in mind, all right?
For the record, I don't prefer any of the options, bridge or tunnel, I'm presenting information, but I do believe that extremely costly option should think carefully before you-
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Vince, I appreciate it. So, thank you, Mayor, those are all the questions I had, so, I was just gonna ask about tonight and our plan, go ahead.
So tonight is on the agenda, we can have our exchange of ideas, anyone who wants to participate in public comment, at that time, I will, you know, that will be the time for the public to participate, and this was a workshop for us to be educated by those who are doing the investigation of the various facts and information. I know there are a number of people who have come here today, who are bridge builders and tunnel builders, and who basically didn't sign up to speak, but we're here mostly to respond to questions.